Aaron Bradley, Nick Milano, Amy Dexter, Glenn Pavlicek, Betty White, Selena Miranda, and Beverly Ross Denny, B R D. All right, so one item on the agenda, and that is update on F Y twenty four budget and discussion. So why don't we turn it over to Nick and Amy and Glenn and see where we are?
Thank you. So as most of you are probably aware, we did get our information about state aid last week. So provide an update on what we did in state aid and then where we stand in terms of the budget. Big picture. So I'll just do this in a presentation format. It might just be easier to see it. So overall, good news in terms of state aid. We received about one point two and five million dollars more in receipts than we brought in in fiscal year twenty three. Our assessments did go up about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that nets out to about a nine hundred thousand dollar net increase in state aid for Milton from fiscal twenty three to fiscal twenty four. The receipts are primarily within chapter seventy, education aid and state owned land unrestricted government, general government aid, which is just general aid that flows to all cities and towns went up two percent from Milton. That's about seventy thousand dollars. So it's not a big component. Chapter seventy and state on land did see pretty significant increases, both in keeping with recent years. And the assessments, we had some increased tuition charges on the school side and then retired teachers health insurance and M B T A assessments increased as they typically do on a year to year basis. One thing I'll just point out is that we had already incorporated a minimum increase of about a hundred and thirty five thousand dollars into our projections. So in terms of where our budget sat, so this is about a seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase over what we had anticipated in our budget projections. So all good news about the ballpark that we expected things to land. So not too far from that. And I just had a couple of slides just to show what we can, what we've been seeing recently, chapter seven, education aid, as you can see, since twenty seventeen Milton has started to generate more money primarily from the Student Opportunity Act. Unrestricted general government aid, this has mostly been flat. I just wanted to show that this has mostly been flat, will probably continue to be flat in the range of two to three percent a year in terms of increases. The state on land one, I can't explain. I don't know what the state is doing and they just are putting more money behind state on land assessments to cities or payments to cities and towns. So we'll take it. As you can see, in the last few years, it's really jumped and prior to that it had been pretty stagnant going down even in a couple of years. So will Milton will benefit. I think the total appropriation for state on land and the state is about forty five million dollars and Milton gets about one and a half million of that. So one additional benefit to all of the land that we have here in town. So that's where things stand in terms of the revenue forecast. I don't know if there are any questions or discussion on state aid directly.
Comments or questions, Betty?
I just was wondering, since that we have people listening in, and this is being recorded, if maybe Amy and Nick and Glenn could speak about what the Student Opportunity Act is and whether or not the increase in our chapter seventy money has to do with enrollment or what factors into that increase?
Glenn, I'll defer to you.
Yeah, you want me to take that one?
Sure.
Basically, the way chapter seventy works, there's two formulas. One is the net school spending. What what a community should be spending on the schools and what and what it can afford to spend. In terms of what it can, what it should be spending, we have something called the foundation budget, where they look and see how many kindergartners you have, how many first graders you have, how many second graders you have, and they have a factor for how much you should spend per student on instruction, how much you should spend on debt service, how much you should spend on all sorts of things. It puts together this big formula for a foundation budget, which basically is, this is what you should be spending. The other half of it is, they have a formula for the town that looks at, you know, what's the equalized property valuation of the town, what's the average income of the town and so forth? And a formula for what the town can afford to spend and chapter seventy is actually the difference between the two. It's the difference between what you should be spending and what you can afford to spend. But the Student Opportunity Act did three years ago, four years ago now, was to say, was to recognize that a lot of the factors that went into the foundation budget side of it were not realistic. They didn't have increases in the cost of health insurance that were reasonable. They didn't have increases in the cost of, well, almost anything, but mainly the big ones, health insurance out of district, special ed tuitions, et cetera, that weren't realistic. They weren't growing at the actual rate. So the legislature built, tried to change the formula to say, well, these are the numbers they really should be. But that would cost a lot. So what they did was they said, all right, we're adopting this formula. We're going to phase it in over six years. We're going to take one sixth of the difference each year until we get up to where we should be. So that's the Student Opportunity Act. This is year three of the implementation of the S O A. So it's, we know, we're sort of halfway towards where they feel we should be with that. And, you know, as they say, you say, that says we should be spending more. They didn't change the formula for what we should spend. So it basically translates into chapter, into extra chapter seventy money. Chapter seventy money goes to the Milton students. So once the number is determined, then it looks at how many Milton students go to Milton Public Schools, how many go to Blue Hills, how many go to Norfolk Agricultural? And then it's divided up among those schools. So some of it has to do with our enrollment vis a vis the others. That's sort of the end of the process where we decide how much of the chapter seventy we actually get to keep. And some of it has to do with our demographics, how many students we have in each grade. There's extra factors for English language learners. There's extra factors in the budget for special needs students and so forth. So that's basically what the S O A was was meant to do. This year, we got more money in chapter seventy, but our enrollment at Blue Hills is up slightly. Our enrollment at Norfolk Agriculture is up slightly. So actually, we're getting, you know, the full chapter seventy to Milton went up more than we're getting because some of it is basically diverted off to Blue Hills and diverted off to Norfolk Agricultural. That's in addition to what Blue Hills assesses us. Blue Hills assesses us amount each year, anticipating what they're getting in chapter seventy from the state, which is actually chapter seventy based on the communities that serve it. So that's the the three minute version of the student opportunity.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn. I see Dr. McKinney has joined us. So welcome, Dr. McKinney. We're just, we had a brief update from Nick on the additional state aid that we learned about the end of last week, which is an additional seven hundred and seventy thousand net. I don't know if you had any comments or questions on the on the on the budget or that at this point. I know you just jumped in. I just want to give you the opportunity.
No, thank you. Nothing yet this time, but I'll jump in as we go along.
Great, great. All right. Other comments or questions on the the state aid presentation that Nick that Nick provided? All right, Nick, I think you were gonna go a little bit further than that. Does that seem to?
Sure. So just in terms of other updates, our health insurance budget expenditure is the one big outstanding item that we we are still waiting to finalize. We have a meeting on Thursday to to get that final number to update our budget forecast. So right now we continue to hold it at about an eight percent increase from fiscal twenty three to twenty four, accounting for some changes in enrollment and a potential seven percent premium increase. But we will hopefully have, we plan, we will have, let me rephrase, a nailed down figure by the end of this week that will flow into the budget. That's a big line item. As you all know, it's about a million dollar increase fiscal twenty three to twenty four as things stand. With that seven percent premium increase, if that premium increases lower, those, that reduction will flow to savings in our fiscal twenty four budget and will, once we finalize that, we'll let everybody know where that stands.
Beverly?
It's just a point of clarification from Nick. I know last year Mike explained that for the purposes of estimating how much of an increase would come from new employees. He initially indicated that he assumed that everyone was on the family plan. Could you briefly share whether or not we are continuing with that line of estimation or are we doing something different?
I'll let Amy handle that one.
So the estimate in there is at an average, I look at the total census, how many are on family, how many are on individual plans and I figure out what the weighted average is and that's what I'm carrying best.
Thank you. I appreciate that sophisticated math.
Other other comments or questions? So so Nick, do we have anything further on with these numbers and with any other expense information on either the level service budget or the needs base budget? Or is it better to wait until we we hear on health insurance?
No, so we have been working to knock down those those deltas between what we're anticipating in revenues and have for proposed expenditures. So in terms of our rollover level service budget, we're about a two point one million dollar deficit as things stand with that state aid amount and with some identified one time use of free cash in the budget, and I'll dive into that with a little bit more specificity in a moment. In terms of the needs base budget, that deficit is closer to about four point eight million dollars. So we're about two point one or four point eight, depending on which which you're using. We continue to try to get that level rollover budget down to balance. And that's what we're working on. So in terms of where we've identified places to use free cash, I have a little bit of a summary kind of to date as to where things stand. So as we discussed in our last meeting, we had about four point four million dollars certified by D L S last month or earlier this month, I should say. Of that, we've made a recommend, I have made a recommendation to the Capital Budget Committee to use about one point two million of it of free cash for capital items across all town departments for direct purchases of equipment and improvements to facilities, et cetera. There would also be some additional capital items funded through debt authorizations, as is typical, but for free cash sakes, it's about one point two million dollars in the recommendation. That hasn't been voted yet by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, but we had a meeting last week to two weeks ago to discuss it. We're meeting again on Thursday morning tentatively. I've been carrying placeholders of a transfer to general stabilization of about three quarters of a million, a transfer to capital stabilization of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So a total transfer to our stabilization funds of a million dollars to start re, not really replenishing, but to start building those stabilization funds back up as as we discussed last time. We we had used it for a couple of years. It was replenished back to what had been withdrawn. I think we're at a place where we need to start building our reserves again in anticipation of any potential future economic downturns and use this high free cash figure to do so. We're including a payment to the O P E B trust of a hundred thousand dollars as we adopted a new financial policy to include an annual appropriation to O P E B for the next several years. And then lastly, we identified some one time expenses about of three hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. I'll note that one of those is our reserve fund appropriation. Our view was the reserve fund is meant for extraordinary or unanticipated costs. So that was an okay use of free cash from our perspective in terms of calling it a one time expense. Anticipated, I've put these as placeholders, whereas we haven't gotten quite a figure request from the school building committee yet. I've had some conversations with Sean O'Rourke about that. We know they're going to need some funding. We just need to kind of match that out as to what that would be for fiscal twenty four. Lastly, we've been receiving monies from the opioid settlements with the distributors and with the manufacturers of about a hundred fifty five thousand dollars so far. So we would look to make an appropriation from our free cash of that figure. Overall, that's about three point three million dollars and we have about one point three, one point four left, which is where we would start looking to fund recurring budget expenses to to get these budgets balanced. The other component here is our ARPA money, which we have about a six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars available. So between those two, between the ARPA money, federal funds and between the free cash, you know, I think we're at a place where that rollover level service budget, we should be in okay shape. But it's just a matter of nailing down a few things over the remainder of this week, and my goal is to have this wrapped up early next week and have a balanced budget for that we can call balanced at this point.
Comments or questions, Aaron?
Thanks, Mike. Nick, I'm confused a little bit.
Sure.
So I thought we were using the free cash to offset the the deficit that we had. So now it looks, it it looks like we're spending a lot of that free cash for other items. So is that what you're planning on doing or am I just confused?
So no, I think there's, you know, there's several places where it can go and where I'm recommending it goes. I think, you know, capital budget is one big bucket I think it should go to, to keep funding capital items for all town and schools, all town departments. Transfer into stabilization, another bucket of about one quarter of our free cash that was certified. And then the third bucket is what we're going to do about the fiscal twenty four budget. We've already identified three hundred and sixty one thousand dollars of expenses in fiscal twenty four that it can go to. And then, you know, now we're in the conversation about that remaining one point three and does that go directly into the operating budget dissolve of it? Do we offset some with ARPA and then some with free cash? So I think that's kind of where things stand. I don't think, my goal was to get to balance that rollover budget first, and then if there's additional monies that we want to use for to supplement some of those needs based requests, we can, we can engage in those conversations at that point. But I think, you know, it's, it's just kind of the math, the way it works out and we can't, I don't know that we would, it would make be prudent to use all of the free cash on just operating for fiscal twenty four to get by. Because that's, it's just, we, there are the needs and we do want to start building up those reserves. So I hope that's clarifying, but happy to take further questions on it.
Yeah, I have a couple more. So when you're calling the the level funded, the two point one that we're in a deficit of, what does that include? Does that include the school budget that the school committee voted on or is that a different one?
So that's where we, to build out that base is kind of how it was represented in their their stuff, which was the the rollover budget plus the ARPA positions plus their spend request. But I did, as I mentioned earlier, that needs based number is the four point eight number that we've been carrying all along since the beginning.
So the four point eight, the needs four point eight, is that, does that include all town departments?
Correct.
Okay, so the four point eight is the one that's all town departments, including the school department with what the school committee voted on. The two point one doesn't have any of the other town department needs in it.
Correct.
So we really need closer to that four point eight is what what I'm hearing ish.
If, if, right, to to meet that needs based budget, that would be the number. I just, in terms of what we have available to us, I don't, it's a hard path to get there.
Okay.
Beverly?
Hi, Nick. I am very new to municipal finance, but I do recall during the pandemic, when we talked about taking money out of the stabilization fund, that there was a concern that would impact our bond rating if we took out too much. And if this is the wrong fund, I know at least half the people on this call know exactly what fund I should be saying. Concern was that, say that again?
You are, you're correct. You're using the right fund and using the right terminology.
And we were able to put some of it back at the end of last fiscal year. And I remember having the conversation with Mary Ann about, you know, did our bond rating change when we took those funds out? And her response was, in fact, they hadn't. And then we actually put some of it back. Is there a concern, you know, the bond rating, I think, was triple, whatever it was, it was considered with hot triple A, whatever. What would be the benefit of putting more in there now?
Sure. So I'll quickly just share a graph just to show kind of the history here. So as you can tell, some money came out of it, some money went in and we're back in fiscal twenty three currently where we were in fiscal twenty one and fiscal twenty in that same ballpark. So the recommendation to put money in would be that as our stabilization funds have stayed flat, but our budget keeps going up. So we're in a worse position now than we were a couple of years ago in terms of where our reserve levels are at. The town's policy on the books that was approved by the select board, I think it's a twenty eleven policy, is that we target about five percent of our expenditures to be in stabilization. You know, I would say that's low. And if you look at warrant committee comments on the town stabilization funds, they were, they were really targeting between five and ten percent. So with this transfer in of stabilization of about a million dollars, I think we would be at about between five and a quarter and five percent of our expenditures, which is above what had been where we had been in the past, but still very low if and all of a sudden an epic economic downturn happens. I, you know, I think our goal will be to slowly try to keep building those reserves up. So if COVID twenty five happens, we're in good position to react. Knock on wood, that never happens, but that's, that's the rationale in terms of our bond rating, correct? We are, we are recert, we were affirmed at triple A. We did have a lengthy discussion with S and P about the actions that the town had taken during the fiscal, during the COVID pandemic and how the town had replenished its stabilizations and you know, our our plans for future years to 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 ensure ongoing fiscal stability. So, you know, they didn't give us a number that they expected to see. They didn't say, hey, you need to create, increase your reserves. It's just kind of prudent to to start building those backed up over the next few years, anticipation of, you know, things coming down the line, that that money will be there for a tough year.
If, given your chart, if F Y is whatever twenty one or twenty two is the low watermark across those years, I'm wondering if if the rate at which we add on to those funds has to be so steep this year. So, you know, if there's a need in order to reflect the growth of our budget, maybe it's a more gradual increase, but I'm not the one who's talking to S and P. So I will defer.
No, I think, I think that's a good cut. The reason, you know, I think it's kind of both sides of the coin of this four point four million dollars in free cash that is is more than is typical for Milton. So let's take advantage of that by A, putting money into operating that we might not typically do, but also B, by investing in our capital budget for all town, you know, town departments and C, investing in our stabilization funds. So I think it's, it's trying to tackle each of those goals when we have this high free cash or high stable, excuse me, high free cash number. The other thing I'll point out in terms of the capital stabilization fund, my goal is that that we're setting that aside for next year's capital budget. It's not necessarily in there in perpetuity. It's more to say, you know, next year we can, we can feel okay that we have a starting point for the capital budget. If we have a million dollars in free cash and fiscal twenty, at the end of for next year's budget, it's harder to, you know, fund free cash, fund capital items, put money into stabilization. So take advantage of this four point four million dollars by rolling it into the operating budget, but also into stabilization into capital.
Betty?
Can you just comment? And I know this is kind of sound a little out there question, but could you just comment if we were to do a, have a successful operating override this year? And I'm not suggesting that, but I'm just saying if, how would the fact that we would put funds into our town departments for their needs that they identified, how would that impact on the monies that would be available to put into the stabilization funds? Would that take pressure off the town budget so that we could put more money into stabilization and and increase that amount? I mean, this is a town that relies on operating overrides and we haven't had one in six years. So just wanted to see if you would comment on that.
Sure. I think in that case, I think there would be, you know, we would probably reduce the usage of free cash and operating if it was going to an operating override in that scenario. So that would certainly free up money both for capital budgets, for stabilization funds, for reserves more broadly. Because I don't think in that scenario, it would be, would make sense to necessarily have an operating override plus requesting free cash for operating budgets. I think in that scenario, you would fund operations with the override and then use free cash for, you know, those one time nonrecurring expenses that is recommended.
Maybe including putting more money in the stabilization funds and bring our levels up is what I'm thinking.
Right, no, that would certainly be an option. And maybe you're saying, okay, let's put a, put aside a full appropriation for next year's capital budget as well. So that's, that's there, ready to go when we get to fiscal twenty five, there's a million dollars sitting there, ready for capital off the bat. And it's, it relieves the pressure on next year's operating budget as well because you're already planning ahead for for those. So I think there would be, you know, the strategies we could, we could do if if that were the situation.
Other comments or questions?
So just one more thing. There's a, there's a question in the comments, and I just wanted to say to the question was whether this includes money for our new middle school. And I just want to say this is the operating budget. That's a difference. That's a different, that's a different category for an override for not for operations, but for capital.
Thank, thank you, Betty. Any other questions or comments? Nick, are we comfortable that we've identified all one time items for which free cash could could easily be used in both throughout the town departments?
Yeah, we just because where we're where we're kind of approaching this budget, a lot of the needs based requests for the most part were more about people than about one time projects. And then in terms of our level rollover budget, that is just more or less keeping what we have today. So it, there wasn't a big list of things that we would classify as truly one time, nonrecurring. You know, we continue to go through things if we see them, you know, we're carrying them on our list. But at this time, just the way the the budget request shaped out, it wasn't a lot of, you know, one time expenses. There are a few here and there, but nothing too significant.
Have we identified all of the one time ARPA requests that would time out for which we could, or to which we could apply the free cash without any, without any concern or with less of a concern, I guess you could say?
So maybe I'm not following.
So, so we, so we, we funded certain, we've funded certain positions and for limited periods of time, one to two years with ARPA funding. Does this allocation of free cash allocate funds for any of those positions?
Oh, I, I get it. At this point, no, because I think with the ARPA balance available, I think we would look to using some of that remaining ARPA funds to continue to fund those positions. And then anything, it wouldn't quite be enough based on our current listing and that would fall to free cash at that point. But I think some of our approach has been to look to the federal funds for those first and then keep them, carry them on the list to then be funded by other sources such as free cash.
All right. And is it fair to say, Nick, that once we get to a level service balanced budget, then we can make some political judgments about whether whether it makes sense to fund items for the needs based budget using free cash with the Free cash with the idea. That uh, the town may want to use those funds rather than have an override this year. To supplement those needed positions. Um, or uh, the town may want to have an override this year. To supplement those needed positions and put a lot of money into stabilization. And these other areas, uh, it seems to me that might be the decision to be made. Is that, is that fair in terms of kind of where we are?
Yes, and that, that has been, you know, the goal from the beginning is to try to get to that. Quote-unquote level rollover and then, and see where things stand from there and make some decisions about that needs-based budget. Um, you know, because at that point, it would have to be um, additional use of free cash to fund operations, which. Is, um, I think as long as we're talking about it transparently and understand that. It's not a recurring revenue source and would have to be filled up in a future year, I, I think that, that has been our strategy from the beginning is, you know. Get to where, where we can call ourselves level and then see um, what is left and, and pick some potential needs-based things to fund.
Because I think, I think it's fair to say that, that um. Respect to the needs-based budget, there's, there's, there, there, there are probably um, a lot of interests in town. That would want to make sure that those are funded, whether they're, whether they're funded. Um, by a segment, portion of free cash. With the idea that we're supplementing the budget this year. Just as we are with ARPA funding, with the intention. Of having the residents decide if they want these positions to continue. Because ultimately, the residents should be able to decide whether these positions should continue or not. Um, and so I, so I think that's, that's something that we should. Move sooner rather than later, because if, if, if the decision. Of the select board. Is that we should. Put a lot of the free cash into stabilization. Rather than um. Uh, rather than. Um. Use that money to supplement. The needs of the town in the short term. And it seems to me that the select board is going to have to make a decision real soon. About whether to move for an override. This year. For those needs-based position, if that's what the. Select board wants to, I, I say move for an override, that, that would be putting it on the, putting on, on the, on the warrant for May. Um, so, so, so I think we have a. Real-time. Issue here, because it seems to me the select board should be in a position to be able to make that decision. About uh, about whether to include on the warrant. An override if. A great majority of this free cash is going to be used uh, for stabilization. And uh, and for one-time capital needs as opposed to supplementing the needs-based. So uh. So that's a solilo- soliloquy, um, let me put it in the form of a, of a, of a question, are we going to be in a position? Uh, to present to the select board. That choice. Uh, in the near term. About whether to use this funding. For stabilization and other, and other funds or. And, and whether if we do that, whether the select board wants to put on the, on the warrant. A, an override to meet the needs, you know, the identified needs of the town.
Sure, I think, you know, as I indicated, my goal is to be done with Mark by March seventh, I think. Once we have our, our conversation about health insurance on Thursday, we're, we're good, we're, we're ready, and we know exactly kind of what those um. Bottom-line numbers are, and then we can. Engage in a conversation um, with the select board on Monday night and, in, in that context, and um, I can work with you to, to kind of frame it. Um, appropriately and, and with the finance committee to frame it appropriately, and. If we want to have another meeting, you know, Monday or Tuesday next week to, to do that, um, I think that would make sense.
Well, I think, yeah, I agree with you, I think that does make sense and, and um. Um. Uh, you know, I think also to the extent that we can. We can work with the departments in town. Um. On the needs-based. But to, to make sure that that's what, that's what we need to move forward this year, in other words, whether there's, whether there are things we can do on the expense side. To whittle down that needs-based benefit, because I think be needs-based, needs-based budget. Because I think there is a desire. Seems I, I sense there is a desire. Uh, among. Those on this call. To try to uh, get to uh, as much, if not all, of that needs-based budget, question is how to get there. Uh, whether, whether we want to get there through an override, or whether we want to get there through a short-term, short-term use of free cash to supplement, to fill the gaps. And then maybe have an override next year. So um, so I think we want to, that's the sense I have, I could be wrong, but that's the sense that I have. Um, other comments or questions? All right, so, oh, Beverly?
And I just agree, I, I, I appreciate the fact that you've crystallized the sentiment of. Of many people that I've spoken with who recognize that, you know. We have, we live in a town with a structural deficit and. Um, whenever there's an opportunity. To um. Meet our needs without. Having an override. Um, I think it's, it's ideal, and I think our ability to utilize these funds. To meet those needs-based budgets that were presented. Would actually bring a level of um, comfort and um. I think people would be pleased if, if we have the capacity. To do that.
Yeah, I mean, to, 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 to put it even perhaps a little bit more bluntly, it's, it's hard to. Ask people to raise taxes so we can put more money into stabilization. So um, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, that doesn't mean we shouldn't. Put some of it in, it's just a question, you know, we got to get, we got to get the right balance here, right, so. Um. Um, all right, so uh, so it sounds like we need to, we need to set up a time for. Uh, next week and, and the, the select board meeting is on Tuesday, is that right, Tuesday night, so? So should we try, oh, Betty, go ahead.
Well, no, just before we adjourn, I had a, I wanted to bring up an issue, are, are we getting ready to adjourn?
I think so, yeah, as long as it's FY, FY twenty-four budget and discussion, that's our only agenda item.
Well, it is, it is, um, so um, I was gonna, and this is, this is a question that I wanted to ask Nick. And Amy, but um. So the, the school committee has met with the warrant committee. And the school committee, I mean, the warrant committee's school subcommittee, which is six members. Um, a few of them are asking for uh, some information, and I wanted to see if that. Was also being requested from the town budgets, police and fire and DPW specifically, but. You know, in uh, the budget book that Glenn prepared for the warrant committee, it lists all of the. Employee um, positions, so it would say Glover School Second Grade Teacher Masters plus thirty. Um, and the salary um, that goes along with that position. The warrant committee is asking for the names of the employees specifically. That go, that go along with the position, and it was asked for, I think, two years ago, so there's a precedence for that, it was. Given um, last, in a couple of years, so um. I was just wondering, uh, Nick, whether or not the warrant committee, subcommittees have been asking for. The individual police, fire, DPW employees' names and salaries that, so that this is some, like a town-wide request rather than a school request.
Amy, do you have an answer to that, or is that, is, do you have a question after that?
Uh, I have a couple of comments if it's okay with Nick, but I don't want to.
No, please, thank you.
Yeah, so I just wanted to um. Just mention a few historical things, so on the town side, the names are in the templates. But the difference between the town and the schools is we don't have the same turnover. So that. The budget for the town, uh, for the schools that's done in the fall. Um, could be significantly different. Than. Where it is now or where it will be next September. Last year was the first time. That the school committee was asked by the former. Um, town administrator to provide those names. Which we did. And then several of the members of the warrant committee said. Why are you giving us names, we don't want to see the names, so there was this big. Thing about, do we give the names, don't we give the names? Because of that turnover factor and just. There's how many employees on the school side, it's very easy to do on the town side, so. That was kind of what happened last year. And why I believe, and I'll let Glenn comment. He and I have talked about this, why the names weren't. Originally provided, because after we, I sent them last year, I was kind of. Told, why'd you do that, we didn't really want them, so there was confusion as to which way to do it. That's all I have.
Uh, is that, is that sufficient, Betty, have you got what you, got what you need?
Well, I think Glenn wants to speak, so.
Yes, yes, I was, that's where I was going next, I just want to make sure you were.
Well, I just want to hear what he has to say first.
Yeah, Noah, um, please do.
I reached out last uh, Friday to the chair of the school's subcommittee for the warrant committee. Um, and they basically, she basically uh, said, she talked with the chair of the warrant committee and said. Uh, a couple of people on the warrant committee were asking for it. Since it was given last year, we think you should give it again this year. So that's basically where we are. So I'm in the process of, you know. Adding three hundred and fifty names. Um, to those budget sheets. Um. So um, I mean, so that's the request, as I, as I mentioned to them, you know, as, as Amy said. I, I put that budget together based on the November fourth payroll. Um, I'd been here for two weeks. Uh, that I looked at it today, I, uh, last Friday. There are already changes in it, I mean, the positions are the same, people are different, because that's what happens. Um. But, I mean, it's public record, I'll give the names, but I, I. You know, it seems to me it's more out of. Curiosity or something, I don't think it financially, it makes much of a difference to have the names there or not, but so it goes.
Yeah.
Can I just add one other thing?
Well, yeah, please.
It's a, it's a lot of work for Glenn to go back and backfill that, I'm just wondering if we could have a conversation with them about. Here's the current payroll and, and not match the two. If they're curious about. Certain ones, it's just. Because of the timing of when I left and when Glenn came on and I hadn't started. The budget yet, it's just. I mean, it's a. It's time-consuming, like Glenn said, he can do it, I'm just wondering if there's another workaround to. Let him be able to focus on other. Things.
But I, I think it's probably beyond the purview of this uh, this group for that, unfortunately, I. Uh, it, it's another way of saying, I certainly don't want to get in the middle of the. This school committee and the warrant committee. Um, uh, Betty, did you have your hand up?
Well, I, I just thought, again, it's more that it feels, I understand that it's public record and anybody can look up anyone's salary, I. I understand that, but it just feels. Like it's a little bit intrusive, in my view. When in fact, the salaries and the positions are identified, I don't understand why we need to have um. Every single person who works for their school department. Identified with the salary, I feel again, that's being maybe a little nosy is what I would, how I would put it, so. I just wanted to let this group know that we were dealing with that and wondered whether or not. On the town side that they were being asked those same requests, and again. I was on the warrant committee like seven years ago, so I didn't remember that all of the. Particular positions are identified with a, a name of an individual, I haven't, you know, I, I don't recall that, but I'm sure. I may not remember, be remembering.
I guess, I guess what we can say is that we can hope that people keep their eye on the ball here, which is, which is trying to get the budget and balance and trying to provide for the needs of the town, and. Hopefully those will. Take our time and our efforts here rather than any kind of ancillary things, but uh. But beyond that, I don't know that there's anything this group can do beyond that.
So I, I kind of disagree with that, Mike, um. If we're really trying to get to a place where this is all the town's budget, it should be up to the town administrator whether or not names are released. With, to the, you know, general public to be used however they want to be used. Um, for any department, that basically he. Is in charge of the budget. Um. I served on the warrant committee for five years, and only one of those years did the names come out, and I was one of the people that was astounded by that. Um, I don't need to know what my neighbors are making, I'm. I don't need to, a lot of our teachers do live in town, a lot of our police officers live in town. Um. You know, I just. I think that it is intrusive, um, if Mr. Milano. And the school committee or whomever has access to these records and can verify them and say that this is correct, then I think we should just take them on their word. Um, it kind of feels like we're getting into this. I want to make sure that each, you know, that there's a Tom, Dick and Sally next to each number. Um. To me, it just seems like it's an overreach and um. So I would, I would not, you know, I don't want us to go back to talking about the school budget and the town budget, I, I don't want us to take a step back. I think that it really is something that needs to be a decision by Mr. Milano or by. Um. I don't, I don't know who else would, would it be over that? The school committee or us, I don't know, but I think that there needs to be a town-wide. Um, policy on this, so that it is equal moving forward. You know, getting ten names from a fire department is a lot easier than three hundred and fifty names for a school building. So I don't know, I, I guess I'm interested. If we could possibly just have this be a town-wide thing.
Well, uh, the school committee uh, is governed by its own statute, as you know. So the school committee and they have, the school committee has purview over its budget. As you know. Um, so, um, so it would be difficult, I think, for the town to set a policy. Um, intruding on the school committee's statutory. Uh, statute, right, but, but maybe there's a way to do it, I mean, we're talking about this real time, it's probably beyond the scope of our discussion, and we can, we can certainly think about it and think about. Whether that makes sense and how to do it and how it would take, uh, how it would take shape. Um, but, you know, in the short term, we need to. And, and I, and it's important, and I, I get that, uh, but, but uh, but right now, I, I think we need to figure out. You know, how to balance this budget and how to provide for the needs of the town, and. If we need to in the short term. Deal with. Other things that, you know, may not be as focused on that, maybe we just need to do it. Um. And then, and then going forward, hopefully maybe rationalize the process a little bit.
Yeah, that would be a good thing.
Yeah. So.
Yep.
Um. Okay, uh, anything else? Um, all right, um, so we're talking about next Monday, I think. If that makes sense, or does, does next Monday? Same bat time, same bat channel make sense to everybody? Yeah, nobody says no, so. So let's, uh, let's go with next Monday at eight-thirty, and let me ask this, uh, does it make sense? Uh, and not to, I know people have difficult schedules, but does it make sense? For our, our town administrator and our director of finance to, to connect with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent business and the other. Departments of town in the next week. Uh, to try to work on the expense side of the house, to see if there's any, anything we can do there to try to. Try to get either, either move items into the one-time category to make sure we have a full. Uh, universe there, uh, or to uh, talk about other, other expenses, does that make sense in the next week? And you don't have to answer it, you could just, you could tell, say you could, ma- maybe, but uh, but it seems to me it would be helpful for us. Uh, if, uh, if either other one-time items are identified. Or, or we can do additional work uh, on the expense side, on all the, all the departments across town. Including on the needs-based side, because I think there's a real interest in this group into, in addressing that. Uh, addressing that as much as we can.
Yes, we will, and we've, we've had those lines of dialogue open, but we'll, um. You know, we'll go back through it again, and uh, ahead of next Monday for sure.
Great, 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 anything else? All right, so we're set for next. All right. So we're set for next Monday at eight.
Can I just ask, Nick, if you could give me a call? Oh, sorry. Nick, if you could give me a call after this meeting, when you have a chance, on a totally different subject, I want to, I wanted to ask you a question.
Of course.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. All right. Anything else? All right. I have 9:22. So we want to.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right. Erin's motion, my second. I was in favor, Erin.
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I'll make a motion for our school folks to adjourn.
Chris, second?
Okay. All in favor? Yes, yes. Selena?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Have a great day, everyone.
Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Bye-bye.
Take care. Bye-bye.